Tammy Doblin here.
Wait a second, Tammy, wait a second, give us a minute.
Yes, we have to start.
You're on.
All right, welcome. For those of you joining this, this is the County Commissioner's Work Session, August 19, 2020, and this is regarding General Liability and Property Insurance Policy Review. And the briefing paper says there's a decision needed. I don't know if we make one, we'll see. If you'd like to join via conference call, the phone number is 360.
Sorry.
Are we doing a conference call?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, 360-252-9020, and the PIN number is 1234. And I'm John Hutchings, the Chair of the Board. We also have Commissioner Ty Mensah. Is Commissioner Gary Edwards in the house?
No, he's not.
Okay, we have County Manager Romero Chavez and Assistant County Manager Robbie Campbell. And we have a whole host of other people. And I will let, well, we have Maria Ponte, the HR Director here, and Grace O'Connor from the Prosecuting Attorney's Office.
You are now a leader. Please record your name after the tone. Press pound when you are finished.
You're now a leader. Label's disabled. Romero, will you introduce the other folks that I may or may not see?
I think you got them covered. Sorry, I didn't hear. Yeah, I think you're going to cover Tammy Doblin, yeah.
And then Carol.
Grace.
Brian, yep, okay. That's it, all right, so who's going to take this over, Tammy? Okay. Now you're on.
Ready? All right. Good afternoon, everybody, thanks for taking the time to meet with us. As you recall, each year, as part of the members of the Risk Pool, the Risk Pool starts a marketing trip to market for our insurance program. They start that February, March time, and then that boils down into a summer conference where all the members, the Board of Directors of the Risk Pool, decide what insurance, what layers, if there's any insuring agreement changes, and those decisions are made in July. And then I come every year before the Board and provide you all that information. And we have a couple of decisions to make that typically we'll go through. There's not a lot of decisions, but I wanted to just go through. I've got a PowerPoint if I can share the screen that might make it easier. Let's see. Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay, cool, cool, all right. At least that's working. Maybe. Okay, so I just wanted to quickly go through some of the things that the Risk Pool has provided for its members. Their year goes from October one year to September the following. So this is last year, leading up to September of this year. And so some of the projects that they've done, all kinds of virtual, they've recertified the Public Officials Program. They spent a considerable amount, $30,000 here on Pacific Training Group to do court security training. There was three of our staff people that attended that last year, and they're actually bringing it again this year as a virtual class. And so we forward that to the court security folks, and so hopefully they'll take advantage of that. But we've got a lot of the scholarships that they have attended. The next page, you can see some of the past trainings that they provided. They've got a couple new ones coming up. There's the Pria Investigator Training, October 7th and 8th, that we forwarded on, and then that Repelra, which is Washington Public Employee Relations Class and Training. I think it's a two or three day class in Yakima usually. I believe that's going to be virtual. So they've tried to do, change a lot of things into the virtual for us.
And, sorry, Tammy, Commissioner Edwards just joined the conversation.
Oh, good. Good afternoon, Gary.
Good afternoon, Tammy.
So these are the premiums that after the marketing trip they went through. They anticipated, on our general liability, they anticipated a 20% to 25% increase, but because we've been closing claims at a lot quicker rate, our reserves are down, and so this ended up being an actual pleasant surprise to us. We have a little slight increase in our experience month factor from last 2019 to 20, from 20 to 21. It's about a 7% increase. But that overall, this major place here is about 11% increase in our GL, and that's that first $20 million limit. Then the terrorism coverage, they started doing that separate because they could find it was a little bit less costly, and so the terrorism coverage is coming in about the same. Then that additional $5 million that we purchase every year, that when it was available, that saw a little bit of an increase, a 9% increase from 26 to 29. And then, as you recall, the Risk Pool offers a cyber policy, but it only goes up to $2 million limit. That is a little bit increased, not a significant amount to worry about. These increases here, one of your questions, how is it going to affect the general fund? Well, we've already budgeted for this, and so this is not going to affect our allocation of rates. So you add those all up on the prior page, and you got, this is what our old premium policy is going to be, this is what our new one will be. This will come due in September, first part of October. Then we have, as you recall, we did briefings last year where we purchased the additional $4 million insurance limit on the cyber. We had budgeted last year for $28,000. We secured coverage, it came in at $19,000 for this year. I budgeted again for $28,000. I'm still waiting on some documents, but I'm guessing it might be a slight increase primarily because not only has a couple of members had a couple of claims, not very expensive claims, but there was a couple of claims. Matter of fact, we had a close, close call here. Nothing was, nothing was lost, but we did have to use their services. So those little things, they add up, so. All in all, it's pretty much a flat renewal for pretty much liability in excess. Then we move on to property insurance. As you recall, we used to joint purchase property insurance, so we would just have our own rates and we'd purchase together. Now what they're doing is they're pooling it, and so the pool is taking on $100,000 deductible for us above and beyond our county deductible. We have a $25,000 deductible when it comes to property. And so last year, we had actually a significant increase because of all those cat losses. Let me see. That $274 right there, that wasn't actually a 23% increase. And so we got hit with another 31% increase, but part of that increase is because we had to allocate admin costs from the Risk Pool, and then they had to divvy up the deductible that the Risk Pool would have to pay for any sort of claims. Plus, as you know, we have appraisals every three years, which is a good thing. Matter of fact, the brokers were saying, hey, this 30% increase is nothing compared to what they're seeing across the board. And the reason why we had a lot of people bidding on our properties is because we do appraisals. It's nine times out of 10, when a building goes down or earthquake happens, people aren't keeping up with the appraisals of the properties, and so the insured value and what the insurer has to come in and pay is significantly different. And so we had a lot of people bidding on our program because we are so mindful of keeping our rates or keeping our values at the appropriate, the appropriate level. Some other changes that, that I need to talk to you about. Vicki Reamer from Gray's Harbor County. She, she's County Commissioner there. She's been elected as President for the pool. Joe Brunswick, he's the Yakima County Prosecutor. He is stepping in as Vice President effective October. And then Rhonda Holler, she's Calhoun County Risk Manager. She was promoted to Secretary of Treasure for the Risk Pool. A lot of things they're going to focus on this year is civil rights cases. They're going to focus on corrections and the leadership, management leadership for corrections bureaus. And then they're going to focus on that court security, basically courthouse security in general. And then they're going to do some classes on road design and maintenance. One thing that would not be a surprise to you is when we went out to market, all of the insurers, with the exception of one, is excluding communicable disease liability. And so we had one contender for the main $5 million layer, and they said, oh, we'll cover it, but it was kind of a false cover, that they'd cover it for the one year, and then they would pull out the next year. And so we stuck with the current carriers that we currently have for the Risk Pool. But what we did is the Executive Committee met, they discussed it. They said, well, if there's going to be complete exclusion, we can write our own manuscript insurance policy. And so the Risk Pool agreed to cover $1 million per occurrence. And so if people say, hey, do we have communicable disease coverage? We can say, yes, we do, but it's very limited to, to the $1 million. So that's, that's a good thing. So all in all, that's pretty much it. The decisions that we need are these three here. As members of the pool, we have options to have different deductible layers. We have been staying at the 250. If we were to go up to 500,000, we get a $20,000 decrease in our, in our liability premium. That's not much considering we'd have to set aside another 250 per claim. And we usually average about one or two claims that hit the 250 a year. It may not happen in that particular calendar year, but it hits from year to year. And so our recommendation for you folks is to stay at the 250. It's just not worth it. I'd have to also increase my reserve, and which would impact the general fund significantly. So I would recommend staying at the 250. It's kind of our sweet spot that we've, that we've had. Also, the next one is purchasing the additional $5 million layer. The manuscript policies with the pool is up to the 20 million. There's 16 other counties that buy that extra $5 million, and I would highly recommend it for, the current price is $29,000. It's, and of course, it's been budgeted for as well, so that's not going to affect. And then the third option, which is not part of the pool, but I need to bring to you because the policy comes due, is to buy that extra $4 million layer of coverage above the Risk Pool's $2 million. So with that, if you have, you have questions?
Yeah. Any, I'll turn to my seatmate. Let me get the, my screen bigger so I can see everybody.
Can I like, how do I un, hold on? Stop, share.
So.
There you go. There you go.
Any questions of Tammy, Ty? Oh, you're muted.
Tracking you on number one, and I think on number two. Number three is the cyber. Is this the same as we had last year, the two, the $4 million over the $2 million?
Yes, same thing.
What is the, and there's a, I think you said it's an increase of?
I think it went, yeah. I'm guessing, I'm guessing it's going to be about $24,000. It came in at $19,000 last year. I haven't had the quotes back yet, but I budgeted for $30,000. So it should be within our budget and shouldn't affect any, any allocation.
Gary, any questions?
No, I'm going to go with all three of Tammy's recommendations.
Well, so am I, but I have a question. You know, and it's just, it's not, it's a bit off topic, but since I have you here. I sit on, and you said the, earlier on, Tammy, that policy regarding use of force is, is being reexamined and such. Is that what you said?
No, the training, training for corrections is being, is going to be a focus of training for this next year. Not use of force. It's corrections leadership.
So I sit on the Advisory Committee for the Governor's Task Force on independent investigation of police use of force. And I was asked by Leah Landon with OFM. She's a forecasting research analyst. Wondering if the county or counties track settlements regarding use of force settlements? Do we do that?
Yes.
And is every county different then?
Every county is different. But the Risk Pool actually looks at, and they crunch the data, they do frequency and severity, and the top, and they look at the top trends. In the last couple of years, we were focused on use of force. Matter of fact, last year and the year before, we were focused on that. This year, they're moving on to different areas where they're thinking. Corrections leadership and road design and maintenance for frequency are some of the areas that they're looking at. And courthouse security in general. So that's, that's their focus this next year. But yes, the Risk Pool does look at that.
Where would I direct Leah Landon to then, to get this information?
Oh, I can, we, we can provide it, or we can give you Derek Bryan's, Executive Director of the Risk Pool.
Do you mind if I forward Leah Landon's email to you and?
Sure.
And you can respond?
Sure.
That'd be hugely helpful. Okay, thank you, Tammy, for that. And I agree with, with Gary Edwards that I'm going to go with your options that you're presenting here, because I, I trust your, I trust your judgment.
Okay, thank you very much. I will get the sheets over for a signature.
Ty, you want to weigh in on that piece too? Okay.
Okay.
You got thumbs up, all three.
Great, thank you very much. Thanks for the time.
Chicken dinner, we made it.
Appreciate it.
So Commissioner, I will be circulating a letter outlining your decision just now, so we can formalize that.
Perfect.
And I'm going to, I'm going to send that email forwarded to you right away.
Great.
From Leah, thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Bye bye now.
Bye.
Is Megan Porter in the room, Romero?
Yes.
Are we going to shut down or keep it going?
No.
Shut down.
Okay, shut it down. Thank you all for joining us, and have a good day.
So many people are using Zoom. We're getting lots of requests to purchase licenses. So we've asked IT to look and see if there is an enterprise option. And apparently there is, and it could save us some money. So.
Your line, Commissioner.
All right, thank you.
And it might resolve some of this stuff.
So welcome back. Now, this is the void county commissioners board work session, August 19, 2020. And the topic is the countywide security project. And it sounds like a decision is being needed.
No, it's, it's informational.
Okay. And, um, got it. If you'd like to join in via conference call, the phone number is 360-252-9020. And the PIN number is 1234. I'm County Commissioner John Hutchings. We also have Commissioner Ty Mensah and Commissioner Gary Edwards in the house, I believe.
That is correct.
Okay. We have manager Ramon Chavez and Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell. And we have, uh, Michael Crowe. And, uh, get this good information. I, I think Michael's going to be leading us. And we also have, uh, Linda Plankton as well.
And we have, uh, Megan Porter off screen.
Okay, great. Our PIO. Welcome, everybody. And Romero, why don't you start by framing it, please?
This is an informational briefing for you to give you a perspective as to the security projects that we have completed, as well as the projects that are underway and perhaps some of the opportunities, uh, lying ahead.
All right. So now who's next?
I'm, I'm gonna, um, kind of start us off and then Michael will pick up and, and take it away. Um, so this is, uh, in part in response to questions that we've received about the countywide security projects and a question from commissioners about cameras and if we could have more cameras at the courthouse. Um, so, uh, Michael's going to walk you through where we're at. But I would just say that we've been working on security uh, at the courthouse and our county buildings for quite a few years now. Um, and we had a study done, I'll just go through the background. We had a study done in 2015 by Thomas Architecture. And we brought in, uh, security expert, um, HOK Incorporated, um, who gave us a good bit of, uh, very good feedback on what we could do to increase the security in our buildings. Uh, county commissioners put money into the budget to do security projects. There was a team at one point of stakeholders representing, um, all of the offices and departments across the county on, um, what the priorities were. And then we started the phased projects to address those priorities. And so Michael's going to talk about what we've done so far and, um, where we plan to go next and what some of the options are around cameras.
Can you hear me?
I do now, yes.
Okay, now I'm going to attempt to share the screen.
There you go.
You got it?
Yeah.
Why don't I got it? Yeah. Okay. Is it, I'm just going to, is that moving it?
Yeah. Well, it went.
Oh, okay. Hi, good afternoon, commissioners. Uh, my name is Michael Crowe. As you know, I'm with Central Services up here just to go over the, the county, uh, wide security briefing with you. Um, the agenda for today, um, real quickly though, is going to be background with Robin just covered. Um, phase is one, design, phase two, projects, phase three, uh, priorities of design, uh, then existing courthouse camera systems. And of course, any questions that you might have. Um, Robin kind of covered the next slide pretty pretty well. And, um, I don't know if I need to go back over this too much more, uh, other than I really want to make a point here on the slide that, uh, the current projects is intended to extend some of the same upgrades across the, the county's inventory, uh, to try and make, uh, extend these, uh, safety to, uh, a larger workplace. And the last thing that she didn't cover probably was hardest engineering. I think they were hired off our consultant roster last fall in 2019, um, to do a review of 13 buildings across the county's inventory. And, oh, quickly, they include corners building, building five, building six, fairground campus, heritage hall, expo hall, family and juvenile court FJC building, public health building, uh, public works A, B, C, D, E at Tilly and the emergency service center, the ESC building. In phase, at phase one, we, uh, In phase, at phase one, we did the upgrades to the, and construction of the security systems on the courthouse campus buildings one, two, three, and four. And this is the priority of design that we used in that. Now, in phase one, we honed our knowledge of the design based on successes that we had in the project's construction. And we've refined priorities to get the best bang out of the buck. And so we had expanded door access control, combined duress and paging and CCTV and cameras.
So Michael?
Yes?
Is this when we went from code pads and keys to our key cards?
Correct, correct. And so, so we, we got rid of all of the manual punch-in codes, the card access. The original HOK's design had a slightly different priority. But as we started looking into it, that this was a much better alignment for the dollars that we had to get the most bang out of it.
It also let us expand to more doors and be more consistent across the county.
Correct. So phase two projects that are underway, we currently have three projects underway in phase two. At the Public Health Building, we have installed door access control with five new card readers added to the existing system. The, the door project at Public Health went very well and came in, costs came in below budget, is currently in closeout. Building six, the Public Defense, is currently under design and we're adding door access control, CCTV and cameras. And the building already has an existing duress system, so we don't have to upgrade that. At Building Six, the security upgrades will work really well with the lobby upgrades that we did early, earlier in the year to give a higher grade of security all the way around for the tenants there. And then the, the last one that we're doing is camera portion, design of FJC is, is, design is complete. It's up for pricing under state contract. Quick note on this is that there were two projects, one for the detention side and one for the correction. I mean, one for the court side. I had the courts and Mariush had the detention. And, and became apparent it was one system. And so Mariush has taken over that portion of, of the project from me. And there's about 100, 106,000 that will be of funds that will be diverted to cover the cameras that would normally been out of this project. Okay, the current priorities of design in phase three. One thing that you'll notice is that we changed the order just slightly, door access controls, then CCTV and cameras, and duress and intrusion. We just found that we, we get a lot more value out of that slight change to the priorities. This was reinforced in the success that we had in phase one, as we found out what did and didn't work, as well as stakeholder feedback and then IT and facilities as well. In the, in the full option review that, that they did, site lighting was also a portion of the, the priorities of, of, of design in that. But budget concerns made that not possible. Yeah.
So before you move on from that slide, the options that Michael's talking about or is for the buildings that remain to be done, and we'll go over those on the next slide. But it, it's really how much can we do in the buildings that are left based on the budget that we have available still? So what the consultant has told us and what we've learned from the work in other buildings is that we will get the, the best possible results if we focus on the door access, the closed circuit and the cameras and the duress. And that lighting is the thing that drops off because we don't have enough money left to do lighting everywhere.
And this, this does not include anything regarding the new, a new courtroom?
No, this, this doesn't even begin to talk about what we're doing for a new courtroom or the off-site courtroom that we're doing with the CRF money. These are on buildings that the county owns.
Right, okay. Go, Ty, go ahead.
What is a duress system?
A duress system is, it, it is a button or a, they call them a button. Sometimes you pull them, sometimes you push them. It is to send out a, it goes to a call center, which is then verified whether it's a, a real call or not. Then they send it to dispatch and dispatch then dispatches either the sheriff or city police depending on where it is.
It's basically a panic button.
Panic button, near on top, underneath, somewhere on someone's desk at the point of entry.
Correct. We have a number of them in, 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 at the courthouse campus. One of the reasons we moved those down in priority is because we have, we have better luck with the, with the cameras than we do with, with the, the duress alarms. Because of the, the nature of what I explained to you, how it, how it, the call goes out, I always encourage people to as well call 911. Don't, don't just wait for the duress. And then if, if there's nothing else, any other questions, I'll move on to the next slide.
Don't see anything? Nope. Go ahead, Michael.
So what's left, we'd like to, with the budget that remains, to continue the improvements across all 13 facilities using the same priorities of design. And, and what is left is Building Six is ready to be bid. We just need to put the, the upfront documents together. Corners Building, Building Five, the Fairground Campus, Heritage Hall and Expo Hall, the Family and Juvenile Court, FJC Building, Public Works Buildings A, B, C, D, and E at Tilly, and the Emergency Service Center, the ESC Building. I mentioned to you earlier about the, the camera system at FJC. Mariush will be doing the camera portion of that, as it didn't make sense to have two PMs doing the same thing on one building. And the cost estimate on the project include, including soft cost is $827,500 plus the 106,000 for Mariush's portion, which is then 933,500. And the budget for this year is 959,000.
So we're coming in just under budget.
Correct.
All right, ready for questions?
The next slide is on the existing camera system. And I was asked to look, what the possibilities were to expanding the system. And I, I discussed it with IT and we came up with kind of a list of priorities of places that we need better, better viewing. The thing to remember though is we only have five licenses left on the camera system. And if you want to add more than five cameras, you would need a, a new NVR, which is a network video recorder to expand the space. But the placements would be the back loading dock at Building One doesn't have good coverage. The east side of Building One, the parking lot at Building One out near the bluff, the west end of Building One at the courtyard, the midpoint of Building Two at the courtyard. The west end of Building Two could use a different camera or existing or should be adjusted, and then parking lot D. And a, a number of these were found out as people were calling for video clips to be pulled that there became aware of some areas, especially in the courtyard, where they can, people aren't, aren't readily seen depending on where they're at. And the, the last slide is just a, a, a quick, in order to assess this, after talking with IT and facilities, we would, we'd like to bring in, if we're going to do anything, whether bring in a consultant that we have to just look at placement and model of the cameras to make sure that, that what we're putting in will work well. There is no costing at this time because there, there, there really is no scope to this project. But, and if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Michael. Does anybody have anything to add to this presentation before we get to the commissioners' questions?
Yeah.
No? Okay, Gary, any questions or comments?
Yes. Going back to what is left, and then you've got coroner building, fairgrounds, family justice, all that. Do you have a dollar amount that goes with each one of those?
Yes, yes, I do. It does not have soft, soft costs added into it, but it is one of the documents that you were given, the narrative.
So I see the coroner's office is $16,000.
Correct.
That's it? Okay.
$16,000.
So it's all listed there. We just didn't talk about it yet. Got it?
Correct, correct. It's all, it's all listed for you to review.
You have all the details.
Yep.
Correct, correct. The one thing, just to remind you that is that narrative does not have soft costs added into it. I did, the totals that I gave you, I did put design permitting and a number of other things in to make sure that we had it fully costed out.
Okay, good.
Ty, any questions or comment?
Looking at the, the camera, the, the last issue about the camera coverage. What is the, how many cameras do we have placed to cover the courthouse campus?
I do not know that off the top of my head, but I.
I'm just trying to get a sense of whether five cameras is doubling the, the amount we have or.
Oh, no, no. It's, we have, I, I think around 60?
Okay. But we have these little gap, you've identified seven places. 60 cameras, I'm surprised to see the courtyard so poorly covered or that there's, I mean, that there's two or three different places in the courtyard.
When HOK did the original study, which was what the camera placements were based off of, the board at that time told us to go with what the experts said and don't, don't change anything. So we went with those initial places and then as, as we've used the system where we found out that there are places that need more cameras.
I have a budget question.
Hang on, just, you got more time?
Uh, go ahead, Gary.
Uh, my question on budget would be, so say the Tilly Road operation out there, would that be covered out of road fund?
Tilly, no, I believe this is REIT money, is it not, Robin?
I think this is a, an allocation that the board made out of REIT one.
When did that allocation take place?
Uh, that's been in the budget, as I said, for a few years now. The board approved a block amount for security. And we're down to these last few buildings. So that has been carried forward in the budget for probably, I want to say, two years.
Okay.
I think that's correct.
And you may have said it earlier, Robin, in my, my initial question. The off-site courtroom, the CARES money will take care of that security?
Yes.
Cameras and all that?
Security would, I was just, I'm laughing because I read an email exchange just within the last hour where both Superior and District Court were saying security is the major concern of the new building.
Well, I'm channeling it. I'm channeling that. Okay. Thank you. Ty, anything further? Any other questions or comments?
No, no. And I will verify those camera numbers for you, Commissioner, and get that information to you.
Thank you.
Okay, Romero. Oh, he's gone.
Commissioner, you had to step out for a call.
That's fine. So if there's nothing else, then are you looking for direction or is this just information?
We would like to continue on with the project. With the COVID stuff, we sort of put everything on hold a little bit while we were trying to figure out what was going on. And I'd like to just continue with design and then either bid this as one big package or individual ones as, as we go along.
The, the cover sheet says decision needed. The briefing says informational only.
So I, I don't know why the cover says that we need a decision because unless the board has guidance or a concern about the direction we're taking, then we're just going to continue on with this project.
I say continue on. Gary?
Uh, I guess my question would be is, what, what's the, what is it, about a million dollars?
That's, that's what's in the budget for this year.
959,000.
Is that REIT money?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so nothing coming out of general fund that you're aware of?
No.
Okay.
Hi, Katie. Well, that's it. I love it. So if that's that, then I, I say press on. Ty and Gary, you're the same thing?
I mean, I guess.
And come back to it with more information.
Unless the sky's falling.
Okay.
Thank you. So thank you all for joining us and we're going to move on to the next one.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
I didn't hear from Linda.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, good afternoon, welcome to the Thurston County Board briefing. And this topic, this is August nineteenth, twenty twenty. This topic is the Rochester Subarea Plan, and it's a follow-up to the public hearing. Uh, I'm John Hutchings, the, uh, County Commissioner, and we've got, uh, Commissioner Gary Edwards and Commissioner Ty Mensah will be signing it, I imagine?
Yeah, he, he should be coming in, shouldn't he?
Okay. We also have County Manager Romero Chavez, and I don't see Josh, is he not coming? Okay, we have, uh, we have Jennifer Davis, Planning Manager, Maya Tipo, Senior Planner, and Shannon Shula, Associate Planner. Nice to see you, little ladies, thank you for being here. And we have Megan Porter, our PIO, in the house as well. Should you want to join via conference call, the phone number is three six zero two five two nine zero two zero. The PIN number is one, two, three, four. So Romero, you want to start off?
Yeah, uh, this is a follow-up, Commissioners, to the, um, the, uh, public hearing that you held on the proposed Rochester Subarea Plan update. Uh, the next step in the process is, staff is going to walk you through, give you, uh, an overview of the comments they have received. And then the next step in the process will be again for you to, uh, provide direction as to when we can bring this matter for your formal action, if that is the desire of the board.
All right. There we go. And Jennifer, are you gonna take this now to helm?
I'm gonna let Shannon take most of the helm. I just wanted to say that, um, I just wanted to recognize the hard work that staff has done on this plan. Uh, it started before my time at Thurston County and there was a significant, uh, level of public outreach down in Rochester and relationship building, and I know Shannon's, uh, worked hard in that community. So, uh, I wanted to recognize that and the several open houses and additional meetings that have been held along the way , um, really shaped the plan that you see before you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, good afternoon, Commissioners. Um, I'm going to share my screen for the presentation. And. Okay, there we go. Let's see. Still not sure how to do this properly. Okay, I think there we go. Um, so, good afternoon, Shannon Shula, Associate Planner, here with CPED. Um, and today's briefing is going to be on the Subarea Plan Update and the Process.
Commissioner Mensah just joined the meeting.
You're welcome, Commissioner.
And, uh, this is a, this briefing today is a follow-up to the public hearing that was held on July twenty-eighth and we'll, we'll review the public comments and outreach efforts conducted for this project. And, uh, staff is requesting direction from the board on the next steps for this amendment. Some brief background, you've heard a lot about this project. This, um, project began in like twenty seventeen and it was, um, a review of the Subarea Plan, uh, for Rochester, which is over twenty-three years old. As part of the Growth Management Act, it is, um, recommended that you review and update these amendments every eight years. This was approved as part of the twenty twenty-one Official Comprehensive Plan Docket and was a priority item of the board. County staff has conducted extensive public research and engagement with nearly a hundred people in attendance at every meeting. There were four widely noticed open house events in addition, um, to attendance at the meeting. Uh, we, staff had four Planning Commission work sessions and a public hearing. There was a board briefing held in February and then the public hearing last month on the twenty-eighth. Um, this is a work session to follow up on that hearing. To date, we have received four public comments, two written, um, one was to address the information regarding the Rochester Water Association. And, um, another one was to add additional information about, um, planning for agriculture and the importance of agricultural plays in South County. There was also, um, recommendations to hold the hearings down in Rochester. Um, that's a little bit harder with COVID today. And there was also one additional comment that was received after the hearing, but it was related to the Grand Mountain Urban Growth Area. We also, um, had the similar kind of comments received during the Planning Commission public hearings, you know, a, a huge interest in having these meetings held down in Rochester at Sweet Hall. Overall, the comments were received from members of the community, um, expressed their, their overall appreciation for the county's effort and time attending these meetings and walking the streets of their community. So I wanted to address some of the, the concerns that, um, were brought up. Um, I think Mr. Merriman, um, brought up one of the issues of, uh, some of the concerns with, um, these comments. Um, with the open house, we, we had so many different, we have so many different projects, um, occurring down in Grand Mountain. You know, we have not only the Rochester Subarea Plan, we have the Grand Mountain Subarea Plan update that is coming soon. Um, we've done some collaborative, um, efforts with, uh, Public Works to address, uh, the transportation studies and, um, the Parks and Recreation Trail Studies that are coming up. And then there were also, um, projects with the former proposal to amend the development regulations in Grand Mountain for, we also know that as the Maple Lane Project. So we did receive a lot of comments regarding those projects and most of the comments that we received were related to those projects. They weren't directly related to the Rochester Subarea Plan. The overall consensus of the community was like, there was general opposition to the prisons and the schools and proximity to schools, you know, concern about infrastructure and who's paying for it. Um, and then there was some apprehension about the future trails due to the number of people it would draw to the community. So I just wanted to make sure that we addressed that, you know, those concerns, um, because those are, they're related but not related. Um, as you can see here on this map, Rochester, um, the, the downtown area or downtown area of Rochester is where the word Rochester is. And Grand Mountain is a little bit further away, but they are adjoining and there's a lot of different, um, projects that are within this region. So there is, sometimes it can lead to confusion as to, um, where these projects are happening. You know, is it in Grand Mountain, is it in the urban growth area, or is it in Rochester? Is it, um, is it really even in the sub-area or is it across the street? So, um, I definitely wanted to address some of those, uh, concerns, um, with the public comments that came up. So now we have our next step. Um, today, staff is seeking direction from the board on whether or not to adopt the new Rochester Subarea Plan. And that will replace, repeal or replace the nineteen ninety-six plan. The board may choose to direct staff to make other cha-changes at their discretion. And today's staff has proposed three options for the board to consider. One would be to adopt the Rochester Subarea Plan without further changes. Uh, the comprehensive plan is amended once a year by resolution and this item would be included in that final resolution at the end of the year. And this option would repeal or replace the nineteen ninety-six plan, um, with a new draft. Option two would be to direct the staff to make additional changes prior to the adoption. These recommendations, um, are in response to the public comments and would be able to be completed by the end of the year and included in that final resolution as well. Uh, these changes would include amending the paragraph in reference to the Rochester Water Association. Staff will update and, um, update the proposed information from a private to a nonprofit entity and include information, more information on wells and water quality for Rochester. Um, we would also update and expand information as it relates to the agricultural lands, uh, including information on farming, agriculture, multiple byways and the importance, um, agricultural is to the region. A lot of this information is already included in the comprehensive plan and, um, and is not really directly in the Rochester Subarea, but it is part of that region. So a lot of people associate long-term ag for Rochester communities. So kind of maybe expanding a little bit in that and making sure we include it as a region. Um, and then lastly would be to, um, elaborate more in the introduction and the background section to kind of really distinguish and better clarify the designation between Rochester and Grand Mountain. And, um, let the audience know that we would be, um, that the Grand Mountain Plan would be coming soon and that it would be encompassing all of the items within that urban growth area. And then lastly, we would include any additional information, um, that is requested by the board or, um, some informational or non-substantial changes. Um, and lastly, the third option would be to, we have no change, uh, not adopt the Rochester amended plan. Um, and just the plan would remain outdated, or we could also repeal it completely. Those are the recommendations that we have for you today. And at that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I think you guys already saw this image today, you know, again, another great project. That's a collaborative effort between Public Works and, um, you know, a park for Rochester.
Uh, I, before we get into questions, I'd ask, uh, I don't see Jennifer now, but Jennifer or Maya, if you had anything to add to, uh, to Shannon's presentation?
Uh, no, I just wanted to sort of reiterate what Shannon was explaining in that, you know, there's a lot going on in this community. Um, they don't necessarily see themselves as lines on the map, like we planners do sometimes and how we've drawn our designated sub-areas. And so when we go to the community and have an open house that covers multiple topics, it can get confusing. And so I believe during your public hearing, you heard that there was a lot of negative comments, uh, coming in about the plan. And I just wanted to reiterate, I think, uh, in talking to Shannon, looking at the records of those, um, open houses, those negative comments are really directed toward largely the, the Maple Lane Project and some of the trails issues, and those are separate and distinct from the Rochester Subarea Plan update.
It sounded like traffic was an issue too. Uh, Bill opened up the Commissioners and Shannon, good job, by the way, thank you. Uh, Ty, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask why you got that map up, uh, in Jennifer's comment. I was gonna ask about the sub-area boundary for Rochester and how it dips down there, uh, at Albany and, uh, one eighty-third. And it looks like north of there, there's a lot of development based on the little line. I'm just wondering how that sub-area gets defined, why that, why that development is excluded.
Yeah, so, um, that was a lot of research. I mean, so originally, when the county was split into these planning areas, the county was split into all of these different planning areas, you know, I think there was like, uh, eleven or thirteen of them. And Rochester was a bigger portion. I mean, it was, um, it was more rectangular in, in, in fashion. And then it was in the, um, and then in the nineteen seventy-eight plan, that boundary shrunk a little bit. And then for the nineteen ninety-six plan, when they were, that plan was really establishing the difference between, um, the urban, the future urban growth area of Grand Mountain and Rochester. I think what I could understand is that they basically use like the roads, the roads and the creeks to kind of designate this sub-area. There's really, um, I couldn't find any information of really like, why was it specifically at this road? I mean, and I think that that's where a lot of the confusion comes in with the community because they might live up at, you know, a hundred and seventy-third and Eugene and they're like, "We're in Rochester, we have a Rochester address and zip code, but we're not part of the sub-area," you know, like, so that was one of the major, um, the major concerns. But, you know, if we were to go and eliminate or expand the sub-area, that would be a little bit more cumbersome. So we kind of just left the boundaries as is, um, as we stated in the beginning that a lot of these elements, um, for Rochester are all already covered in the comprehensive plan. And, um, the, what this document really does is kind of, it sets a, um, um, kind of like an economic development for that downtown area. Um, if you even look at the census designated place, that is even smaller. It's just, it's a really small team, uh, it encompasses only like that, you, those couple of blocks near Mills Diner. Um, so, yeah, that's a long answer to your question, but it's also, it, they just kind of, um, in nineteen ninety-six, they just established these, these were the lines. And you can see it, you can kind of see that they're like, because of creeks or roads, that they kind of just carved out what the sub-area would look like.
Uh, Commissioner Edwards, any questions, comments?
I do. Uh, I was under the impression that this planning stage was going to expand the ground, the Grand Mountain Urban Growth Area, and I don't see that there was any expansion there.
So let me, let me address that, Shannon, real quick. So the Grand Mountain, um, Subarea Plan or Urban Growth Area Plan is coming soon. So staff is currently working on that plan and that does include a few proposals from citizens on the fringes of the Grand Mountain, uh, Urban Growth Area, proposals to potentially expand, uh, that urban growth area. So that's being studied now and will be brought to you at a future date.
What, what, when, when about Jennifer?
Um, Shannon, what is your work plan telling you about this?
So work plan is that we hope to start Planning Commission, we can get some time in there this fall. And, um, um, possibly early next year with, um, if we can kind of move things along in Planning Commission, then I'm hoping by early next year, we should have things.
I, I'm curious, how come it wasn't included in the same project?
Well, it was and, and they kind of been going concurrently. The, the, um, the thing with those urban growth expansions are, is that we have to do a feasibility study for infrastructure. That means water and sewer. And we need to review the countywide planning policies with the Urban Growth Management Committee to look and see if we are meeting those, uh, that capacity to expand, um, the boundaries. It's a little bit more, there's more work behind it, there's more, um, boards that we need to go before to, to ensure that we can.
Okay, I can follow up then a little bit on that. I was under the understanding that, uh, the water and sewer issue had already been addressed and we were actually, uh, wanting more hookups to put us in the black on our whole sewer operation down there. So I don't get this delay.
So that really has to do with, we, we utilized TRPC's, um, study, and that's a feasibility study, to see how many vacant parcels we have currently within the urban growth boundary and how much expansion. And based on that, there was, um, the potential for the existing capacity. We still have about, I don't recall right off the top of my head, but it was something around seven hundred to a thousand new units that are still able, residences that are still able to be built within the existing boundary.
Well, I, I have to say, I, I don't know where I'm at on this, but I'm disappointed that this wasn't moved forward so that we could look towards revenue coming in, uh, towards our sewer system. We've been, uh, in the red for a long time. Uh, getting in bed with the tribe, kind of bailed us out of that to a degree. But I was really under the impression that we were gonna expand that per citizen requests down there so that we had room for economic development down there to include the depression area that was designated. Go ahead, I'm listening, I'm, I'm waiting for a response from the county manager.
Um, I just would want to clarify, the sewer utility, um, in Grand Mountain areas, what is the water utility, is not operating in the red.
Oh, I know it's not operating in the red now.
I just wanted to clarify that.
But the only reason it's not is because we partnered up with the tribe. Before all that took place, we were in the red.
Uh, and, and not necessarily, um, uh, the, the, uh, the wastewater treatment plant has capacity, as Shannon stated, for all the properties they currently have within the designated UG of the Grand Mountain area. And as you probably heard a couple of weeks ago on some of the plans to expand, uh, the, uh, the wastewater treatment plants was, and, and we're already building additional capacity on, on the water by a. capacity on, on the water by another reservoir.
Yes.
So we're lining up to the process of absorbing additional capacity in need be for any type of development that's already designated within this area. In terms of the timing, I don't know if any of you, the three of you, Jennifer, Shannon, or Maya, were part of the conversation with the board decided to split those two sub area plans. I think at some point, we, the board had the conversation, no, this board, previous board, as to how they can consolidate into a single one. And it was a request by, I believe, the Rochester community to have a separated sub area plan. And that's how that was split. And, and, and the time and, the timing related to the Grand Mountain area, what is coming up, it was determined by the priority established by the board, I believe, a few years ago.
Yeah, I will, I will add to that. So the, there was a discussion early on in the project, I believe it was back in 2017, where we talked about consolidating the two sub areas. And the community really felt strongly to keep the Rochester Sub area plan. So that is why the two plans were maintained. But to Commissioner Edwards' comment about delaying Grand Mountain, I believe it's still, I think it's a priority two or priority three. Rochester was at the top of the list. We're still working on it. We're not delaying it. We just are moving Rochester forward, so we're not delaying the Rochester Sub area plan. But Grand Mountain is coming. Commissioners can look out for that within the next year. It'll be on the Commissioners' table to consider.
Yeah, I do. And I also want to add on that, too, is that, you know, the, the studies that are needed are, it's a collaborative effort with Public Works. So as Public Works does their update to their water and sewer plans, like, those are really important components that are needed for the Grand Mountain. And we, we also have, not only, I think there's about five, five or seven land use amendments that are also included in Grand Mountain. So it's not just, you know, Rochester was a little bit, there was, there was some components to it, but it wasn't as, there weren't as many elements included in the, in Rochester. Grand Mountain has a lot more working parts to it. I mean, because it is an urban growth area. And so those are the things that we really, you know, now that the the Public Works has kind of finished or is finishing up, they have a consultant doing the sewer study and those things. Those are the elements that we really need to look at in order to look at some of these land use amendments to see whether or not we have that capacity. So we've been kind of waiting on some of that information. And now that we have that, we're kind of working it into the Grand Mountain plan. So that's kind of where we're at with that. It is coming.
Well, I'm, you guys are doing great. I'm, I got no problem with what you're doing. And I commend you for all your hard work. And I know there was a lot of community input, but I guess maybe, maybe I'm not remembering the same conversations that we had of pushing to get an economic development engine started down there, and damn quick. So I'll be asking other folks, not you folks, but other folks about that. You've done well.
And, and right now, there's, there is a lot of capacity for new development down there, even without the changes. So this is, the, the, finalizing the Grand Mountain Sub area plan is not an impediment for any developer who would like to develop within the bounds of the current Grand Mountain area.
Well, I know of about three of them that have been told it's, it's not in the cards to be able to put their operations up here.
And, and that's what, that's what you're talking, on the fringes?
Yes.
And the fringes of the current UGA boundaries. But you, you heard from the staff, the proposal that is coming for you is going to expand that. So hopefully that will be the case. But, yeah.
So Commissioner Mester, I don't know if you have any further comment or questions, but I have a couple of questions.
Well, I guess the only other comment I'd have is this looks like impervious soil apple. About the same progress we're making on that. So I'll just let it go with that.
Yeah, and I, I do want to add one last thing, is that it's, the, the expansion is one of the options that will be presented. You know, there are, there are several options. And it does include the expansion and the process that we would need to go through to be able to expand those boundaries.
Ty, do you have any further questions or comments before I get mine in?
Of course.
Okay. I was surprised to see some of the comments that came in, especially from Jeff Merriman, who viewed this even as last month, it seems like, that the county is forcing this down their throat. And were there going to be any further follow-up meetings out there in Rochester, or no?
Um, there wasn't, there wasn't any specific follow-ups. You know, and I, this, I just didn't want to, you know, address Mr. Merriman's comments. And from that meeting, if I recall, it was the meeting at Sweet Hall, and it was related to the, the Parks Trail. And we, again, that was one of the things that we were already having a community meeting. So, and the Parks crew was looking at a, a trail study about placement, you know. And so we let them, we invited them to the meeting because they wanted to ask public input about where that placement of that trail would go. And so that was, that, at that meeting, that was, seemed to be the, the item of discussion was like, bringing trails to the community and the, the type of, the, the people that would be coming to the community based on these trails.
Whether the trail would split the farm or run on the side?
Split the farm. And then, yeah, and I think that there was concern about homeless, you know, the influx of maybe homeless communities coming in because of the trails.
But Shannon, it also says on the briefing that they had, whoever they are, citizens in Rochester had concerns about trap, they had traffic concerns, and they wanted additional information or clarification concerns. I don't know if
So
concerns are.
The, the traffic concerns were, was there's an overall dislike of roundabouts. There was, we did receive a lot of comments about, you know, we don't want any more roundabouts. But as you know, there are several roundabouts planned for Grand Mountain and Rochester. And, you know, safety concerns, I think Moon Road was another issue, like, but, you know, if you look at where the location of Moon Road is, it's not even in the sub area, but it's something that we noted. And so safety concerns, you know, like, concerns, like, if we, you know, if we do these economic development improvements for these, for Main Street Rochester, like, how much traffic is going to be coming by? Like, can we have bikes, pedestrians, and freight traffic all in the same area? So, and the pullouts and parking. So those were kind of like the concerns that sort of came up in those meetings. And what was the other thing? Logistics? Oh, logistics, logistical stuff was like, again, the overall request was to, like, the community is very involved, as you know, and they just want to be able to have these public meetings down in Rochester. I think that the ability to have Zoom meetings and people be, to be able to attend would be one option. I think the other suggestion was like, could we potentially put a, have a screen at Sweet Hall or somewhere down there so that the local folks can come and be able to view and, and chime in on the meetings and be included in that way? I know Steady is doing that to some degree. I think George goes down there and, you know, hosts the meetings at one of the cafes. So those are, I think, the overall logistical concerns of like, how can we have more public input? Can, can we have the board come down and have these meetings down here?
Okay. So now, at this point, we're at the end of our time. We're looking for, you're looking for direction?
Yes.
Options?
I have one more, one more question. Hutch, just take a second.
All right.
Did you get it straightened out about the ownership of the Rochester Water Company?
Yes, I did. I was able to talk with Ms. Weaver and get more information about that.
All right. So we have options one, two, and three. I'm gonna ask, Ty, it's your district. Do you have a, do you have a preference, Ty?
I'm voting for option one. I think this is, this has been a long process, and it's had a lot of outreach. And you could continue to tinker with it and add this and add that. But I, I think it's been well received by the community. Our staff's done a great job with it. We've got other priorities, as we know, in our long list of things, such as the Grand Mountain issues and others. And I'd like to see this get adopted and we move, move, move on.
And Gary?
Yeah, I'm, I'm there with Ty, I believe.
And I'm gonna guess, I'm gonna presume that option number one is staff's recommendation. I don't know if you want to give, okay. Because I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna give thumbs up to option number one as well.
I just want to note that I did include or update a few of those changes for the Rochester ones. So there'll be some slight changes with that, so.
Shannon, thank you very much. Go ahead, Jennifer, did you have something to say?
No, just to remind you that your final action on this will be at the end of the year when you take your adoption action on all of the comprehensive plan amendments at the same time. So that's the next time you'll see this.
Good info. Thank you, Jennifer. Maya, always good to see you, too. Thank you.
Yes, no.
Thank you for jumping in as well.
I'm happy to be done with this plan. Now on to Grand Mountain, so.
Yes.
Maybe it'll be done by the end of the year, too.
Yep.
Let's hope so.
Hope so. All right. Thank you all very much. Touchdown. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, all.